Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Carver Planning Board of March 12th, 2024. We call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is approval not required plans. The purpose of this plan is to create four lots for Derek Varley, Assessors Map 126, Lot 25-0, and located at 278 Tremont Street in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Do we have anybody here? Please come up and have a seat. We've waived the fee in regards to this. Excellent. I see we've been provided sufficient documentation in regards to the provenance of the property. So if the floor is yours, if you have anything you'd like to say.
Okay, my name is Alan Diaz. I'm with Scott Varley, who is Derek Varley's father. We submitted a A and R plan a few weeks ago, and there were some questions on one of your particular bylaws. And I think we've addressed that situation with the town planner. I don't, I'm hoping that all, you got a copy of the narrative that we presented?
Yes.
And I think it outlines that section of the bylaw that was of some concern. So, I wonder if anybody's got any questions on that particular bylaw?
I think we're all familiar with it. Pardon?
Got a chance to review it.
Yes. Had a chance to review it. Any questions from the board? No questions, no concerns? It all looks good to me. The chair or the board will accept the motion to approve the approval not required for four lots at 278 Tremont Street for Derek Varley.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Sordillo. Do we have further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky.
Mr. Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
Darwin says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. You had a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Our second order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Plymouth Elks Lodge Number 1476, requesting a site plan review pursuant to Sections 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 169 South Meadow Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors Map 113, Lot 70E, portion of, in the Airport Zoning District. The applicant proposes to construct a 2,520-square-foot building with all associated parking, driveways, storm water management utilities, landscaping, and appurtenances. We have a request from the applicant for a continuance until March 26th.
Correct.
So the chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on Plymouth Elks Lodge 1476 until Tuesday, March 26th, Room 1, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 PM.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Do we have any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky.
Aye. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
Darwin's will abstain.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of K and G Development Corporation, requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 3800 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw and a definitive subdivision pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located at 85 Wenham Road in Carver, Mass. Assessors Map 99, Lots 230 in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The applicant proposes a five-lot subdivision under the conservation subdivision bylaw. All right. Good evening. If you would just sign in and identify yourself for us.
Sure. For the record, Scott Finer with Grady Consulting, representing the applicant.
Scott, do you want this laptop to show the plans for?
If you could just leave it on that, on that page for now, that's fine. Thank you. Excuse me. So we've submitted a definitive subdivision here. The proposal is to create five individual lots, single-family houses. What's existing on the site, it's mostly wooded. There is one single-family dwelling and a barn nearest to the road. The topography of the site, the road, is essentially the lowest point. So from, excuse me, about where the proposal for the lot line, the middle of the screen there, that's about the high point, and then it slopes back down to the road. At that point, also it then slopes down to the back toward the wetlands. So there are some wetlands on the site, pretty far away in the back. So we're also requesting a special permit. This is one of those unique situations where there's a provision for a conservation subdivision here, which allows for reduced lot sizes and setbacks. So if you don't mind, if you could scroll down to one more, one more page. Yep, so this, this sheet here, this is a conceptual layout of what a typical definitive subdivision would look like. As you can see, the lots are quite large. Their, their minimum requirement is 60,000 square feet. In this conceptual plan, the roadway would have to be quite large as well, about 520 feet or so. So the unique section of this bylaw allows us to create smaller lots, and the provision with that is that, is that the applicant then donate a portion of the land, so it's going to be the rear portion of the land that will go as a conservation restrictive restriction. If you don't mind scrolling back up to sheet two. Yep, so this, this sheet two here, this is the proposed lotting plan. And as you can see, the lots are much smaller. The roadway is about half the length of the standard proposed roadway. And that, that entire Lot A in the back there, that entire lot will be donated to the town as a conservation restriction. So again, each of these lots, single-family dwellings, they will all have individual potable wells, individual septic systems. They, we have located all of the abutting wells and septic systems to be able to meet the setback requirements. As far as the drainage goes, the proposed plan is to have everything pitched down to the drainage basement, which is nearest the road. You can see it in the top left of the screen there. Yep. So that, that'll capture all the impervious coverage from the roadway, from the houses, the driveways, et cetera. It'll go through a series of pretreatment, sediment four bays, two sediment four bays, and then into that infiltration basin. We did, we did a test fall out in that area, and it's, it's great, great soil. So it's, it's a really good situation to, to have an open basin in that location. And yeah, we actually have not received any comments from the town on this. I'm not sure. Okay.
I think our engineer is just under quite a load of work at, at the moment. We expect to get those back. Off the top of my head, I, I don't, I don't see much aside from, it looks like all the houses have 50 feet to the property line.
Yeah, so the, there's a reduced setback allowed for this type of subdivision.
Yeah, that, no, it's, it's about, there's a 50-foot buffer required for, next to any other residential lots. I only see maybe Lot 5 would be the only one that, that might have that concern, but honestly, they, they all look like they're 50 feet out, but I, I don't have the numbers on here to be able to tell. And appropriate access for the conservation land. So there'll be room to park a car or people to be able to come and go. Now, is it being donated to the town? Or is it deeded to the town? Or are we deeding it to the conservation?
There's a few options within, within the bylaw. I believe it can be donated to the town or some entity that has conservation in mind. I'm not sure exactly what the applicant plans to do, but it, it will fall within the requirements of that, of that section.
Okay, we, we should have some sort of outline on, on what's going to happen to that. Yeah, other than that?
Mr. Chair.
Please, please, Mr. Robinson.
Can I ask our planner? How many lots, I meant, how many houses per an affordable house do we have?
I don't think there's a requirement under conservation subdivision.
Well, the, the threshold for inclusionary housing bylaws, how many units you create. So as far as the big picture in Carver, is that your question? We're at 3.7%, something to that effect.
So this doesn't require us to have asked for an affordable?
No. Because they're, they're not getting more than what they could put on there anyways. But that, that's something should, after town meeting, we can, we can look at, at this, because I, I would like to, and nothing to do with you, but allow bonus units for conservation subdivisions in regards to affordable housing or over 55. So, but that's just my personal thoughts on it, and it has nothing to do with what's in front of us here. And is this the graveyard on the corner?
It is, yeah.
All right. There'll be no disturbance?
No.
Not that you're going to wake anybody up or anything?
Only on Halloween.
The graveyard's actually elevated up quite a bit higher than, than what the existing site is.
All right.
Hopefully, it stays that way.
Any further questions or concerns from the board?
And we're, and we're waiting for a, a butters list on this?
No, at this point, we submitted the plans to Fussin O'Neil, our consulting engineer, and they're in the midst of doing the technical review.
I did notice that we were, some assessor's list for butters. Did we ever, was that established? Have you received copies, the certification letters, or?
I'm not sure I'm familiar with the question.
Let's see. The last page of the application, there's a butters list request, but I don't know if it's been completed.
Yeah, it's, it's been completed.
Okay. And you've provided the certifications, the green slips?
The planning department actually notifies the butters.
Oh, okay. All right. Perfect. I honestly, what's the proposed, excuse me, sorry about that. What's the proposed build elevation?
What, I'm sorry, what do you, what do you mean by that?
Notice in the, the top, the topographic on the, on the maps, it's, it all seems pretty close to the same elevation. Are you guys going to, you're going to maintain that as far as the elevation for the subdivision? Are you going to maintain the natural contours? Do you plan on?
Oh, so for the, the proposed grading? Yeah, there is proposed grading. I believe it's on Sheet 5?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, trying to see on that, what the?
Sheet, maybe one more, one more sheet down if you could.
What's it going to be?
So there are, there are top of foundations proposed, proposed for each house. They're all, they're all different. There is, there is grading proposed in there. The, the plan requirements require minimum and maximum slopes for the roadway, so that really dictates the, the grading that we'll have to do in this area.
Right, right.
But, but as far as the general topography goes, it will, like, flow patterns for storm water, rainwater will, will remain the same.
You know, looking to, do earth removal, get rid of tons of earth?
No, only, only what's, what's required based, based on the town's regulations.
Are you going to spread it around the site, or?
It'll be, they'll, I'm sure he'll try to balance it as well as he can. But again, there are some requirements for the, the roadway grades that, that dictate.
Well, I, I think that my concern is more along that, is are trucks full of earth going to be leaving the site? Like, hundreds of yards, or?
I, I don't believe this will be triggered for an earth removal, if that's, if that's the question.
No, no, that's not. We just want to know if the earth that's being pushed around is going to be used on-site, or it's going to be removed from the site?
There, there will be some that will need to be removed.
And how much do you expect that to be?
It's about 3,000 cubic yards or so right now.
That's a lot of earth.
So the, the numbers, just to make sure, on Sheet 5? We on Sheet 5?
What's the?
Let's find out. Seven to eight.
You up to Sheet 5? Okay. So the, if we look at Lot 5, up near the, up near the cul-de-sac there, there's a number 110 in block. Is that the elevation that you're looking at?
So that, that's the proposed grade?
Okay.
So that's going to be a slope down to the road?
Slope down to the road.
Correct.
9800, 1002.
Road's going to be a little bit lower than the rest of the?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
And it looks like the road is around 106, which seems to be?
Yeah, it looks like it kind of slopes up, starting at 98.
Yes, there's a, a roadway profile, if you scroll down a little to the left. Do you mind if I just go up to the screen and point out?
No, please go right ahead.
Then on Page 7?
Right. So, and, and the, the earth you're talking about removing is in regards to the roadway, right?
It's, it's all dictated by the road.
Okay.
What sheet do you want me to go on, Scott?
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
This is, this is the roadway profile, these, these dash lines here. This, this one here is the existing grade for the center line of the road.
Yeah.
And we, we always do 20 feet to the right, 20 feet to the left to kind of give you the full picture.
Yep.
And then this solid line here, this is the proposed roadway.
Good.
And again, that's, those, those grades, they're, they're maximum grades based on the town's requirements.
Yeah.
And the center is going to be of the subdivision road is going to be a grass surface, or?
The subdivision is, I'm sorry?
The center of the subdivision circle, is that going to be like a, just a nat, left natural?
Oh, the island, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be some type of vegetation. It won't, won't be a pervious surface, if that's, if that answers your question.
Does the shape of this comport with our, before we had teardrop down the street? It had, it couldn't be around, it had to be wacky shape?
Well, this is a conservation subdivision, and, and part of that is that we concentrate development in an area which leaves a larger area open, and it gives some flexibility to us and, and the applicant on the requirements for the roadway and lot size.
The shape of the circle, before we had one that had to be, we looked at our drawings, it was a?
It was a oblong.
It was stretched out instead of a nice round circle.
Was that one bordering on the side of like a big drop-off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they drew it the way that it was supposed to be, and then we said, no, that makes no sense.
Right, right.
So.
We, we did, we, we gave them some advantage in regards to that.
Is this, the way it is, okay. Look at our pretty picture.
We'll have to check with our engineers, but it, it looks okay to me, but I'm not an engineer.
But if it doesn't match the Carver drawings?
If I may, if we could go back to that roadway again? So if, if there is a concern for the amount of, the amount of removal, the amount of cut on this site, if, if the board's willing to, to waive the, the maximum grade percentage, but we could, we could change these grades here from, from 2%, 6% up to, up to, you know, 4%, 8%. If we're able to bring this entire road up, you know, four feet saves you about 1,000 cubic yards. If, if you're able to, to waive this, and we can, we could, obviously, we can't change the, the natural grade down here by the road, but, you know, if we could bring, pitch this up even higher and increase these, these grades, I think it might be a benefit to the amount of earth that has to be removed there.
Well, we can check with our engineer and, and see what he has to say, because I wouldn't care to venture an opinion, because again, I'm, I'm not an engineer. If he says it's, 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 it would be better to do it that way, then I, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
And it's still, on, on paper, that might, increase in the grades might seem to be a significant change, but it really won't. This is actually a fairly flat road, as it's proposed. It, it could easily be increased, and, and still, you can still drive comfortably up and down it.
And this will be served by some sort of community responsibility deed with the road and everything, or road maintenance and?
Yep, and, and maintenance of the drainage system, correct.
All right. Excellent. I don't have any questions? Anybody from the board?
Are we, we at the site visit stage, or do you want to wait until after the first stuff from Andy comes back?
I don't, I, I wouldn't think that we'd need to wait for the engineer's report. I would think that we should do the site visit before, and that way we'll be familiar with the site when, at the next public hearing, when I expect we'll have Andy's recommendations and everything. All right, so?
So, if I may?
Please.
So to that effect, the board does typically take a site walk. What's your timeframe for getting the center lines and some of the lot corners and things like that, Steve?
What would you be looking for? The center line of the roadway and all the front lot corners?
Correct.
Okay. We could, we could have those staked out within a week, and meet, meet maybe toward the end of next week? I don't know, how often does this board meet? And when do you expect to get the results from the?
We meet on the second and fourth Tuesday every month. I expect that we will most likely hear back from our engineers by the 26th. So we would want to do a site walk somewhere around 20, 21, 22? Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday morning?
23rd's out for me.
What, what day is that?
I think that's a Saturday.
The 23rd is a Saturday?
Yeah, because I've got like 15 things already planned that day.
All right, I mean, you get, I get it, you get kids. But it's lighter out later. We can still set it for 5:30, quarter or 6:00 or something, and, and still have sufficient light, if that's good for everybody.
Does that work for you, Kevin?
What are you talking about? What day?
A week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday or Thursday?
March 20, 21, or 22, right?
Yeah, I mean, right now, my, my day that's most open is actually Friday, the 22nd, like 11 to 12.
That sounds perfect for me if we're talking in the afternoon.
Okay with everybody else?
Yeah, as long as I don't have a call, I can make it.
Alan?
I have to double-check, but right now it seems, seems okay.
Fridays are typically light for me, so.
How does that seem to you, Scott? 10 days, Friday, 11 o'clock?
That'll work.
Excellent. All right, the, if there's no further questions or comments?
What are we going to use for an address?
How about 85 Wenham Street?
It should be right next to the old cemetery that's there.
Now, just a quick question, maybe this might help the public and also myself as far as the earth that's going to be removed. You say 3,000 cubic yards?
Yes.
If we were to break that down, what does that look like as far as, say, a full 18-wheeler?
That's, that's a good question, but I want to answer your question with, with another point. If, just want to go back, if we could increase the, the grade of the road, the amount that would be removing will be significantly reduced.
Yeah, we have to look at it from the, from our engineer's perspective.
And, yeah, and again, you're saying that the only earth to be removed is in regards to the roadway, access to the site?
Exactly, so that, yeah, so the roadway dictates all the grades for the, for the dwellings themselves.
But what, an average 20-yard truck would be about 15 trucks.
You think it's 20 cubic yards, a truck?
Right, and that?
That's why I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, just so we can kind of simplify it.
Okay, yeah, trucks and trailers, about 28 cubic yards.
That's all one material.
Yeah, we just, we want to make sure we protect the roads and the road edges and that. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, the chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing on the application of K and G Development Corp., requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 38 and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaws for property located at 85 Wenham Road in Carver.
To March 26th?
To March 26th, Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall, 7:00 PM. March 26th is good.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sodillo says aye.
Darwin says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you for your time.
There'll be over 100 trucks.
Is this close on this to the 26th?
150, right? Yeah.
No, 107.
107.
Oh, based on 28 yards, yeah.
Yeah, does that make sense? Buddy, did the, um, site walk is after the next meeting?
No, it's a week from this Friday.
Next Friday.
At 11:00.
22nd.
11:00 PM.
So is it?
Not, not this Friday, but the Friday after.
What's that date, 27?
22nd.
22nd.
22nd, 7.
Sorry.
7.
Double deuce!
My bad. Don't make sense.
And, and we're holding the public hearing tonight for the warrant articles?
Correct.
Excellent.
We didn't have to have a public?
We held it at the police station last year, or?
For this, last?
Oh, it was a definitive subdivision, so yeah, it requires a, a special permit.
Just wondering, it will keep it in the audience, I'd say.
Right, all right. Um, all right. All right. Read the public hearing notice. We'll open the public hearings for town meeting articles. In accordance with the provisions of the Carver zoning bylaw and GLC 40A, Section 5, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1. The first article is to see if the town will vote to accept the renumbering and revision of the zoning bylaw of the town from its original numbering, as amended through the April 2023 annual town meeting, to the numbering or codification, arrangement, sequence, and captions, and the comprehensive revisions of the text of the zoning bylaw as set forth in the final draft of the Code of the Town of Carver, dated February 2024, said codification of the zoning bylaw, and on file at the Office of the Town Clerk on the town's website at www. on the town's website at www.cavermass. Said recodification having been done under the direction of the planning board and being a compilation and comprehensive revision of the present zoning bylaw, including amendments thereto, all zoning bylaws as amended heretofore in force shall be repealed, except that such repeal shall not affect any suit or proceeding pending as the result of an existing law. The zoning bylaw shall be codified as Chapter 290 of the Code of the Town of Carver, Massachusetts, or take any action relative thereto." Have we received copies of this?
Have you received copies of it? It's a 156-page document.
And that's what this link is, is pushing us?
So, we're, we're going to get into that in, in just a moment, if I may. So, let me state first off that this public hearing notice is written by an attorney, not me.
Yes, yeah, I struggled with it.
Yeah, you clearly can see that. So, uh, so this is a project that the town clerk has been working on for a while in order to take our current zoning bylaw and put it online. So, right now, there's a copy of the zoning bylaw online. It's a PDF document. You click on it, it comes up with a sheet, and there's 160 pages of stuff that you read through. You can't search it, uh, it's just a static document.
It's not a good PDF.
No, so converting this to, to, uh, to eCode, which is something a, a number of towns have done, about 140-plus in Massachusetts. So, the copy of the draft bylaw is available in the town clerk's office, it's available online. If you happen to go to this notice, it's on our, on our website, and you click on the link, it brings you to this 156-page, 164-page document. So, that is what's on file in the town clerk's office, and, and that is what we have online. Uh, for pretty obvious reasons, I didn't want to print 164 pages of a document multiple, multiple times, for both reason money purposes. So, nothing is changing in the bylaw, uh, we're simply converting that format to eCode. And I've got a couple of examples of that, ones that I'm familiar with. As we talked about eCode, uh, these are the towns that they've already worked in, there's 141 of them in Massachusetts. Ones I'm familiar with, this is the town of Falmouth zoning bylaw. So, when you click on the zoning bylaw, uh, you can, uh, put in a term, and it'll take you to accessory structures, accessory uses. So, it's considerably easier to use than the current bylaw, and with these, you can actually click on them, print them, share them with somebody as well. It's not just fancy towns like Falmouth that do things like this, not to disparage our neighbors to the north, but, uh, most folks would think that Plumpton's a considerably less fancy town maybe than Falmouth, but Plumpton has eCode as well. So, it's one of those things that sort of brings some of our stuff into the modern air, uh, and makes it easier for both members of the public, potential developers, and members of the planning board to find stuff as well, rather than sort through all those things. Now, I still have my very dog-eared copies of zoning bylaws. But this is essentially to take the existing zoning bylaw and make it look like that. And online, uh, that's what you'll see, and you'll be able to click on any of those particular elements, and they'll take you to, uh, any section of the bylaw. So, as a part of the process that eCode has done, is they've gone and did a comparison of our zoning bylaw and make sure they captured all those sort of things. The first draft they got us, they missed the changes from 2023, so they sent it back. That's why our hearings gotten pushed back a couple times, we originally thought we were going to do this in February, but it took them a couple tries to get, you know, all those amendments, uh, into the bylaw. So, essentially, we're taking our bylaw and we're changing the numbering system on it, and changing its organization a bit.
We're going to change it around so it makes a little bit more sense then. Like, we won't have conservation subdivision at the end of the bylaws as opposed to like what it is now.
Well, the nice thing is, is no matter where it's at, you can find it.
Right.
Because you can just type in a, a search key, and it'll take you to that.
Uh, any language corrections or typographical errors that, that need to be noted on this?
Yeah, uh, there, you know, those, those particular ones are, you know, have been embedded by the attorneys, embedded by our attorneys as well. So, it's essentially a, a one-for-one transfer from here to there. If you get too deep into tweaking some of the language in the zoning bylaw, uh, then you start to raise some of the concerns of the Attorney General, did you change something in the bylaw that wasn't part of it?
Yeah, that was, that's my concern, is shall been changed to something else, or, you know.
Uh, those are the easy ones, uh, commas are amazing. A comma in a different spot changes what you're, what you're looking at. Uh, and we had, uh, on a, on a larger scale recodification in Falmouth that we worked on two years before I got there, and the, the time that I was there, uh, we were still walking through, and that was, that was more substantial than what we're doing here. Here, we're just putting it online and changing the numbering system. But in Falmouth, we were trying to create some, change some differences in languages and things like that. We had a lot of interaction with the Attorney General. We're not doing that here, we're simply taking what we got, uh, and putting it online with new numbers. This will be going, uh, happening for the general bylaws as well. So, all the general bylaws of the town are also being changed under, uh, are also being switched to eCode, so you'll be able to find those things as well.
All right.
If I may?
Please.
So, what's the cost on this, and has it gone through FinCom yet?
Uh, the money has been in place for a few years now. Kara has been working on this, uh, with eCode for a number of years, our town clerk. So, it's fully funded, uh, we're just trying to get the product to the finish line.
Gotcha.
I think we approved it in 2021 or 2022, around that time.
What were you going to say? I, I know it's been a long time coming.
This is a public hearing, does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments they'd like to make in regards to this? Uh, seeing none? How does the board feel?
I think we should bring ourselves up to that standard.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
That is, you know, user-friendly.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I mean, if nothing else, at least a searchable PDF.
Right, yeah.
Dog-eared copy is not your statement, Mr. Bott, yes.
So, um, seeing no further questions?
Does the board want to make a recommendation to town meeting?
Chair will accept, uh, a recommend, a favorable recommendation on, we'll call it the first article, because I don't have a number here.
There's no numbers.
For the recodification of the bylaw, uh, zoning bylaws. The chair will accept a motion, for a positive recommendation.
I will make that said motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. The second proposed article. This is public hearing notice for the second proposed article. "To see if the town will, will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw, Section 2320, Table of Dimensional Requirements, to increase lot size from 60,000 square feet to 2 acres, and increase frontage from 150 feet to 200 feet in order to reduce overall development and protect resources as recommended in the 2001 Carver master plan, or take any action relative thereto." There were, there were a lot, a lot more reasons, uh, that were stated when, when we brought this forward, most of which is to protect natural resources, protect open space, direct development towards preferred locations, preferred development areas, town centers, centralized locations where town services are available. The table of dimensional requirements is listed as such, minimum lot size 60,000 to 80,000, and frontage 150 to 200 feet. Questions, concerns, or comments from the board?
Why are we doing this? Why are we suggesting to do this? Because of all the reasons you just spoke of, but why do we need to increase? You know, I mean, isn't that gonna, people gonna look at it and say, why do we want to move to that town? Because I have to have this much space, you know? I, I just, I don't understand your purpose behind this.
Okay, but, all right.
Besides what you just spoke.
There's, right, there's a, the, the, the four, uh, before we updated the master plan in 2017, it had a huge list, and it said, this is the, and at that time, this was the first step in order to direct development and take control of development back in the town. The state wants us to develop in a more appropriate fashion, centralized where the town services are, town centers, preferred development locations. But also, some of the benefits are increased open space, uh, protection of the aquifer, protection of the environment, protection of the wildlife, protection of some of our historic resources and such like that.
But you think that will prevent the growth of Carver?
No, but what it's, it's, Carver's going to grow as Carver's going to grow. Uh, these are the recommendations in order to have Carver grow in a responsible and, and well-ordered manner, rather than the urban sprawl that we saw, uh, pop up over, well, the biggest development was, what, the late 80s to the early 2000s, where houses were just being thrown up wherever they were available. We saw the conservation subdivision come in tonight, uh, we saw how much open space is available there. It, this will also promote our conservation subdivisions and, uh, and help reduce the overall sprawl that's taking place that, that we can see has affected, um, the rural character of the town. It's, it's clearly had some effect on, uh, our natural resources, our water, the aquifer, the amount of, um, impervious surfaces in, in the town. And again, uh, that is also why I want to revisit the conservation subdivision after town meeting, I would say, in order to make that even more appealing by, uh, allowing bonus houses for affordable housing and over 55 developments.
Now, the group that was here tonight, he started by having to draw a plan that would show the number of houses that could be built normally.
Yes.
And he's building, that would have been five, and he's building five, but putting them on smaller parts and leaving some open. Now, if you take the same piece of land he started with, and he had to make every one of the house lots 2 acres, would he have only gotten four?
Well, again, that's if, if.
And then he could only swap and put four in the conservation.
Right, again, see, if, if this passes, then we're going to have to revisit the conservation subdivision laws. If it doesn't pass, then there's no reason to revisit the conservation subdivision laws. Our conservation subdivision laws is our only subdivision law that doesn't give bonuses. Uh, so really, the only, um, true bonus for the developer is less building, less roadways, and along that lines.
You're going to get bonuses, so instead of having four, five house lots, you're going to have seven houses when you're done.
Well, um, it could still be a house an acre, like we do for various other, uh, what? What's the other subdivision that we do?
Townhouses.
Townhouse subdivision, that's, that's an acre. And again, it's more concentrated.
With the numbers, you're going to put, you know, with, you come up with more houses under some circumstances.
Yes, yeah, but the development will.
That's the sprawl.
But the, but the development will be, um, focused towards the direction, the town centers and the, uh, preferred development areas that the town wants to see. Uh, the more we spread it out, the more our town services are spread out, the more our town services are strained, the more our taxes are strained.
Now, this was from the 2001 master plan, what happened 2017?
It, it was, uh, included up to.
Was it not included?
It was included up until the 217. It wasn't, it, the, all the other reasons were included in the 2017, I don't know why this wasn't included.
Just oversight, not a, and a?
I couldn't, I couldn't speak to that. I, I know, I know at the time, our town administrator was a, uh, well, I, I can't speak to it, so.
Was it an oversight, or was it a direct?
I don't, it, it's not mentioned, it's not said anywhere, if it was specifically taken out or overlooked at the time.
Mr. Bott, Ms. Hewens has a question, but could you bring that original paragraph back up?
Say again?
Could you bring that original paragraph back up? I just want to read it.
This one?
Thank you. And then Ms. Hewens has a question.
Please, uh, uh, please, it's a public hearing, uh, anybody's welcome to approach the mic.
Sarah Hewens, 52 Forest Street. I can tell you exactly why we left it out of the master plan. We got smarter. It, in 2001, we were sort of directed this way by a consultant. And then along came something called Smart Growth, which the state is encouraging. This kind of, this kind of lot size is otherwise known as exclusionary zoning, and has lots of consequences that, um, sometimes we don't realize. First, it raises the prices of the homes, because land is very expensive. And we already have an affordable housing almost crisis in this town. So, to, to zone, this large lot size is just going to increase your affordable housing, uh, problem in town. A lot of times, people think that these large lots, big houses are going to pay for themselves in services, and they usually don't, especially if they have kids. Costs over 10,000 a year, um, to raise, to put a kid through school. So, that's, um, not a very good solution. So, I, I, I want to direct you to the, this is something Mr. Bott, um, pointed me to. It's called Exclusionary by Design, and it's a very recent document, November 23. The author is Amy Dain, D-A-I-N. I think this is a, a really short-sighted, um, proposal. I, I know in 2000, um, I was just on the planning board for maybe two years. It takes a while, as, as a lot of you know, to, um, I think that's why the terms are five-year terms. Takes a while to figure a lot of things out. So, I really urge you not to approve, um, not to recommend this article.
So, you're, you're saying not to recommend it because you feel that more houses should be built?
No, I think you focus on conservation subdivisions. Uh, because when you make a, a large lot, you're not preserving land, you're just making it private. You're not preserving land, the conservation subdivision preserves land, public land.
But, but what's going to push people towards conservation subdivisions? Currently, every house that's built, uh, has an average of 2.2 kids in it.
Right.
So, we're, we're, with the smaller lot sizes, we're talking about more people, more town services. That's not why we're doing this.
No, the conservation subdivisions, actually, the first one that came into town was the first time the lot sold for about $200,000.
And, and how many have we had in the last, conservation subdivisions in the last?
We have quite a few.
If I may, Mr. Shea?
10 years.
Can you not just have a perfect example of that tonight? Where the conservation land is?
There's three or four on Plymouth Street.
And that's one in, or maybe we've had, one in 10 years, yeah? But we've had only, only one usage of this in maybe 10 years. We've had a resurgence of one that we re-approved that was approved 12, 12, 15 years ago.
Well, personally, I know of two, in my time, two other ones.
There's three or four on Plymouth Street alone.
High Street.
Which was approved 15 years ago, and we re-approved it.
Uh, so I did a little delving into this, and, and, um, so what I looked at is, uh, took a look back over the past, actually, uh, since 2002. Uh, so currently, as you see on the screen, this is a document I put together, conventional subdivisions here recently, we've had four conventional subdivisions recently. Uh, Slocum Mills, which added one lot. The Harwich Road subdivision, that was two lots, one is 247 acres, and the other's 136.1 acres in those two lots. The other two conventional subdivisions are non-residential, that was Route 44 and Ricketts Pond Business Park. As far as conservation-type subdivisions we have, I went back to find the ones that I could find, and they include Alexandria Lane subdivision, Gilbert Estates, Lindbya Path, Weathervein at Patriot Pines, and Whistleberry Glen.
And Captain Perkins Drive. And Captain Perkins Drive.
So, so we go back, and, and this is what I did because our records weren't particularly good, it's always, you know, an adventure in archaeology, as I said before, trying to find things from the past, but, so looking at annual town reports, so in two thousand and two, the report said there were five subdivisions noteworthy, the Indian Brook subdivision, which was the first conservation subdivision. We go to two thousand and three, there were seven subdivisions, including Toftree Commonwealth, which is a commons, a conservation subdivision, as well as the residence in Sampson Pond and Chance Courts were both townhouse developments. There weren't really any report in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, we had four definitive subdivisions, including, and these are quotes essentially from the report, noteworthy Hawks Haven and Highlands Farm Conservation Subdivisions, and Copper Lantern Lane Townhouse Subdivision. In two thousand and six, we had two definitive, non-residential subdivisions, Commerce Way and Carver Business Park. The trail goes kinda cold at that point because I really don't know what subdivisions were created over that point. But for the most part, the subdivisions that we've seen have been conservation subdivisions because developers look at this and say, I get the same yield that I would get for a traditional subdivision. I can make the road shorter, I don't have to disturb as much land, and to Ms. Hewens' point, is that just creating bigger lots just means more people, more stuff to put on, on their property. This is a, 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 a land use management tool that was very popular at the turn of the century, two thousand, nineteen ninety-eight, when I got here. Places were upzoning from one acre to two acre lots. I would, and I wasn't at the master plan meetings, but it's not unusual for an idea whose time had come and has passed to not be included in the next version of the master plan. So likely two thousand and one, when my friend Larry Coff, who was a very capable planner, he was bringing the tools to the town of Carver that were available and that were in vogue in nineteen ninety-eight, because it was a two thousand and one master plan. This type of development, this type of zoning, upzoning, creates issues of additional roadway lengths. It increases the price of land, it increases the price of housing, and reduces the supply of housing while increasing the cost. It is a tool whose time was, was at one point, but wasn't particularly effective. So as we've talked about before, you know, it would be unusual to see somebody take something from a previous master plan and say, hey, let's, let's change this at town meeting, if we didn't pick it up in two thousand and seventeen. My professional opinion is this goes in the opposite direction that the Commonwealth is looking at, and the needs of those, of Massachusetts, the needs of the region to produce additional housing. We should be rolling out the, not rolling out the cart, but we should not be making additional impediments. We're gonna be working over the year on the MBTA zoning bylaw, and we're gonna create, we're gonna create zoning for multifamily housing. That'll create potentially more housing in areas where we wanna see that development here. This particular strategy is one that was in vogue at one point, it isn't today. And most of the studies, most of the cerebral studies, and I've got a few of them I can send to you, you know, get into fifty-two pages about how zoning has had this exclusionary episode to it. If we make the lots bigger than those poor people from other places, they can't afford to move here, and so have to go somewhere else. So the role of these things is what's called fiscal zoning. We wanna make sure that we're creating as much value as we can for the house for the purposes of budget, but it doesn't provide additional housing opportunities for folks. And at one point, people went, well, we don't want more housing here. What we're finding out today is that the housing crisis is in Massachusetts, it's in Carver, it's in the Northeast, it's frankly, in places that are all along the eastern seaboard, are born of the fact that we don't want people coming to our towns, so we create zoning to try to keep them out. So the more opportunities we have to create housing, the more opportunities we have to keep the price of housing from escalating even more than it is today. This is anathema to what we see in the planning business these days, this is why it wasn't likely in the two thousand and seventeen master plan. And if I was a person who was voting at town meeting, I would not be supporting this, but I'm not one of those people.
Well, we, we already see the direction the state is going in requiring density levels in towns with already established zoning bylaws. Take, for instance, the MBTA zoning bylaw. Now, what's the density level there, fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen per acre.
Per acre. And it's not to keep people out of the town of Carver, but we're also on a well and septic system too. And fifteen per acre and overdevelopment is gonna affect the aquifer that all of our wells are on, and-
Yeah, fifteen units per acre requires a municipal water supply and a wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
So rather than have things just go into a septic system and have them leach into the ground, they'll have to go to a wastewater treatment plant for a tertiary treatment plant. It removes solids, nitrogens, and things like that, and creates actually cleaner water that goes into the aquifer versus whatever just leaches through your septic system.
And where does the solid waste go?
Solid waste goes to sledge farms for the most part. People use fertilizers and things like that. But the bigger picture is, is that there's a housing need, there's an unmet housing need, and we should be working at creating more opportunities and putting less impediments in the place, way of people's houses. There's a couple people who've talked to me about this, some are in the room tonight to talk about the impacts of that on changing that zoning as well. But this is the trajectory that most people took twenty-five years ago, but not today.
Please, if you introduce yourself.
Neil Taya. I'm a developer in town, civil and environmental engineer as well. I'd like to add that if we start making the lots larger, where do we stop? Today, it's an acre and a half, tomorrow, it's two acres, later on, it'll be three acres. As a developer, we wanna be able to make houses affordable and be able to sell them. If I go and I buy five acres and I'm only able to build three lots, today, it's three lots. If it shrinks down to two lots, I'm gonna sell them for the same price. So kindly like the miss said, discuss and explain, prices will go up, and it's going to make affordable housing drop. So if our goal is to bring more citizens to the town in an organized fashion, I, I do believe leaving it as it is and growing, it's nice and slow, for the past twenty-some-odd years, we've been doing a great job. In the past three or four years due to COVID, we've had a boom in growth, people leaving cities and moving to larger spaces. But with that, if we're averaging two people a household, the more houses, the more taxes that are gonna be generated. Vacant land is only taxed at a certain rate. The calculus isn't there to support reducing down the, the amount of houses we can build. The creative way to push people toward the conservation restrictions for the subdivision is exactly what it's used for when we're building subdivision. If we're building four main lots of land that's already on the street, we're restricting the amount of properties we can build on those frontages. What do we do to protect the land that's already being developed and have an opportunity for future growth? So that, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you.
If I may. If, if, if what you're saying is true, if we raise it was to keep us from raising it-
Further.
And making it, making it even bigger, couldn't the same be said for making them smaller?
Absolutely.
Making more dense.
If we make them more-
To the point, to the point of, I, I've, I've lived in the city where the lots are super small.
Correct.
It's the reason I'm not in the city right now.
Absolutely.
It's because I didn't wanna be, I got tired of that. We're not, we're, the, the town's not for that. If we look at, you bring in, what, fifteen, twenty, twenty more houses, now we're looking at having to hire more police officers, having to employ more firefighters.
So we're creating more jobs?
Having to create more, oh, you're saying that it's creating jobs.
It is.
I'm saying it's creating a tax burden. Who pays for, the, the cops aren't-
The new citizens.
Hold on, hold on, a new police officer does not go out and produce a product for the town to sell and make money off of, to pay for the officer to get paid. It's taxes, it's a tax burden that produces, that pays for the officer, that pays for the additional teachers, that pays for building new schools, because we're now facing an overcrowding issue in our schools as we grow, which we don't have money for.
So number one-
Again, tax burden, tax burden, tax burden.
So number one, to go to your initial statement, we're not here because we wanna make them smaller, we're here because it was put on paper to make them larger. Leaving it as is, we know the monster that we're dealing with, we know what the criteria is that we're dealing with, and we have the history over the past twenty years to predict what the next twenty years is going to look like. The services that our men in blue and our guys in the fire department, they're providing safety. So making Carver safe entices people to wanna live here. So they are providing a service. We're paying for that service when we pay our taxes. Creating more house lots generates more income for the city.
No, 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 it doesn't, that's, that housing is a, a tax negative and it's a strain on town services. Plus, the more houses you have, the further the town services have to travel to go to get there, the more often they're called, the more at-risk, not only they are, but in general, the town. Our town was built, the half of the roads were cranberry bogs or people's old driveways that were in this town. This is, this is how the town was developed.
And we're not here to tax commercial land, we're here for this discussion on residential land.
Right, and, and it's unlikely that any development of commercial land will ever offset the cost of residential housing as a strain on, on the taxes. And Carver is extremely limited on the available commercial and industrial land in this town, so we have nothing to balance it out. So really, the more houses you build, the higher your taxes are. But by concentrating them in, in various subdivisions, townhouses and conservation subdivisions, which, for instance, a townhouse that gives exceptional density, but then the town is already looking at the potential of forty B housing coming, like, not small developments, not a few townhouses and such, we're looking, the last proposal was for, what, three hundred and eighty, I think, at the time?
And once we have those high-density demands created in a town, then the commercial comes along. So if we have three or four hundred-
The problem with Carver is there's no place to put commercial, our, our commercial real estate is, is, is limited and it's finite, and that's, that's, that's the big issue that Carver has to decide, that we're still supposed to be orienting towards tourism and sports and horses and bikes.
What happens is when we have those three or four hundred forty B developments developed, now we have three or four hundred more votes, voters coming into town. They're gonna wanna change that law and the zoning laws.
And they're more than welcome to, absolutely, and, and this isn't us changing the law, we're just, it's, it's our recommendation, these are just our, it's the voters of this town that will make, make the decisions on this law.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for your time, I appreciate you. And Mr. Moore.
Good evening, everybody, Savory Moore, twelve South Main Street. I've, there are three things that I wanna bring up on this, I, I don't think this is a good idea. First of all, I wanna echo a little bit of what Sarah Hewens said. I was on the two thousand and seventeen master plan committee, and the way we operated was we took the two thousand and one master plan and went page by page and said, does this still make sense? And when we got to this thing, we said, no, it doesn't. We made a definitive answer on this, that we did not want this to be included anymore. The criteria that worked in two thousand and one no longer worked in two thousand and seventeen, so we specifically removed this from the master plan, figuring that this master plan would supersede the one in front of it. So there is no reason that this should happen. Second thing I wanna bring up is the, the taxes. Two acres with the expense of buying the property alone, people aren't gonna buy a two, developers not gonna buy a two-acre lot and put up a three-bedroom house, they're gonna put up a six-bedroom house. So now Carver's gonna become a community of million-dollar homes. And the trickle-down appraisal effect on everybody else in this town is going to raise property taxes so that people can't afford to live here any longer. And I don't think that's what anybody wants. And the third thing is, is, and Mr. Shea, you said this, and about it, it creating open space and creating more conservation land.
I, I, I didn't say conservation land, but to direct towards conservation-
More open space, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You said more open space. I disagree with that from the, I'm the, the chairman of the Conservation Commission, I disagree with that. I, I think what's going to happen is that, yes, it creates more open space, but it's privately owned open space that the town no longer has any control over. So what's going to happen, and we've already seen it a little bit on Lakeview Street and, and South Main Street, where a property, a developer has purchased property that goes into a wetlands in order to create a lot size. And that property goes out of the control of the original owner and becomes property that is under the control of the homeowner. And I think with a two-acre lot, that more and more of the wetlands that are so important here for our water are going to be included in those two-acre lots. And they're going to become the backyards of the children who live in those big houses. And they're gonna run through the woods, and they're gonna trample the understory, and they're going to create a, they're going to ruin the things that are so important in cleaning the water that goes into the aquifer. So I, I think that open space, the conservation subdivision creates open space with rules. This law will create open space with no rules. So I'm, my feeling is that this is not a good thing to happen.
Well, you brought it up, but now, it's currently prohibited to build a house within a hundred feet of a cranberry bog, correct?
That's correct.
So how is this gonna change that, first of all? And second of all-
I'm not talking about a cranberry bog specifically, I'm talking about any wetlands, because there are going to be wetlands that are sold that aren't cranberry bogs that are going to become the playgrounds of children.
I, I, is, isn't there a prohibition against development within a hundred fif, a hundred feet of the wetlands?
Yes, there is, but-
Isn't, isn't all this land currently privately owned?
Yes, but more and more of it is going to become wetlands. It's going to be unusable land. But yes, there are laws against that, but the town of Carver cannot, cannot enforce our bylaws. We don't have the personnel to go and, and scold children running through the woods and trampling down the understory. We don't have, the law's in our favor, the personnel is not. So we can't enforce the rule, the rules that are on the books right now, and this is just going to make it worse. This is going to increase, increase damage to the bordering vegetated wetlands around all of our wetlands here, which, 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 you know, helps clean our aquifer. I just think, there's no way you're gonna control kids and tell them, oh, there's a, there's a sign on the tree that says you can't walk back there anymore. They're not gonna stop.
Again, isn't there a prohibition in town for development within a hundred feet of any wetlands?
Development isn't, I'm not talking about development, I'm talking about, I'm talking about people using the land, walking, trampling, running, playing.
I think kids running through the woods playing is the least of society's problems and, and maybe a part of-
If they're trampling all the understory which protects our water, it's a bigger problem than you might think.
How many gangs of kids are we expecting in town?
What's that?
How many gangs of kids do we have traipsing through the outgrowth?
No, I'm talking about, these houses that, if, if you build a house on a, on a two-acre lot, it's gonna be a five or six-bedroom house. We're not talking about families with one or two kids, we're probably talking about families with four or five kids.
Doesn't our-
And now that becomes their backyard.
Doesn't our master plan call for the development of mansion-style properties, three acres plus?
Not, not as a bylaw.
Not as a bylaw, but I'm-
No, but the two-acre bylaw that was-
Our master plan does.
The, the two-acre proposal from two thousand and one was specifically thrown out in two septic- thrown out in 2017.
I, I couldn't find any reference to that.
I was on the board, as was Ms. Hewens, and then there were 12 other people on the board. And as I said, we went page by page through 2001, said, we'll keep this, we'll throw this out, and the two acres went out because it just didn't make sense any longer. And it doesn't make sense today, in my opinion. So that's, that's what I-
No, thank you, I, I, right, no, thank you, I, I didn't, you, you're welcome to, it's a public hearing, so you're welcome. I didn't, I didn't need to be, you know-
No, 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 that's fine.
Confrontational, I just have questions on, on what you said too. Like you had questions on what I said.
Right, right, but I'm just, that's my, that's my opinion on this, and I ju, I just think it's a-
And I appreciate it, thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
It's a bad idea. And I think that, uh, that, I think, I hope the town sees it that way. This is not good for the water, it's not good for the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else that would like to speak? Seeing none, further discussion amongst the board?
So I do have a couple of, uh, letters we received as well.
Oh.
If I may-
Please.
Uh, so, uh, this is from, uh, Rod Pal, Rod and Sharon Palmer of 43 Meadow Street, Carver, Massachusetts. Uh, dear Mr. Bott, as residents in the town of Carver, my family and myself would like to go on record as being unwaveringly opposed to the unwarranted increase in lot size from 60,000 to 80,000, and minimum lot frontage from 150 feet to 200 feet. This increase in the minimum dimensional standards would render hundreds of legally conforming lots to be non-conforming overnight. This legal status will become detrimental to all owner, all homeowners legally and financially. Thank you, Rod and Sharon Palmer.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't make previously approved-
I am, I am, I am reading the letter, I'm not debating-
I understand, but it wouldn't make previous approved lots non-conforming.
Uh, I, I, I'm, uh, I'm going to tell you that if you change the lot size, if you live on a pro, piece of property that's 60,000 square feet and the zoning becomes 80,000 square feet, then your house is on a legally existing non-conforming lot.
When, when the house lots in the town of Carver with 25,000 square feet, did that, did that make all of them non-conforming now?
Correct, and in fact, in some of those lots, and this is, gets back to the, uh, the, uh, theory of merger. So if you have a, if, if you're in, uh, smaller areas like Crystal Lake is an example, this Rocky Nook in Kingston as well, where if you own four lots that are 5,000 square feet and you own them all together, and those zoning, the zoning becomes 20,000 square feet, for the purposes of zoning, those four lots become one. So those lots, you can't build on a 5,000 square foot lot, you have to combine them together to make a 20,000 square foot lot. So yes, in fact, they do, when you change the zoning, create non-conforming, uh, uh, lots and non-conforming structures. It may require a homeowner to get a special permit to expand their home if they're on a non-conforming lot at that point, but that is the reality of, of changing zoning, is that you have those consequences.
That would put about 60% of the lots in Carver as non-conforming because the majority of lots in, in this town are, uh, under the 60,000 square feet. That, that only development has only come along in the last 25 years, so everything built prior to that is a non-conforming lot?
If you're under 60,000 square feet, correct, without 150-foot of frontage. Uh, so there's a second letter as well. Uh, dear Mr. Bott, I am a resident of the town of Carver residing at 2 Church Street. I would like this opportunity to express that I am adamantly opposed to the article on the planning board's public hearing notice which seeks to increase lot size from 60,000 square feet to two acres and to increase the frontage from 150 feet to 200 feet. This change would have a negative impact on all current lots meeting today's minimum dimensional requirements by making them non-conforming. Sincerely, Jill Martins. She did not leave her address. Actually, she did, 2 Church Street in, in the course of the letter.
Well, lots that were approved at 60,000 square feet would maintain that approval.
Yeah, you won't tear a house down, but you, uh, you just create that non-conformity. So to my point, uh, the direction that this takes isn't the direction that, uh, meets the, the policy and frankly, the societal needs of, uh, of our region. You know, there's, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, for South Street Chamber of Commerce, Bridget, there's like, uh, a deficit of 60,000 houses, uh, every year in order to sustain the economy. You know, we are the beneficiaries of the economic engine that is the Boston metropolitan area. If we don't have enough places for people to live, to work in Boston, because they certainly can't afford to buy a house in Boston, then those businesses go somewhere else. They go to Austin, Texas, they go to somewhere in Ohio. And as we lose those opportunities for people to be, uh, may, have gainful employment and to participate in the economy, then our taxes start to be affected because now the value of our property isn't what it is because people don't want to live here anymore. It's too expensive, it's the old, uh, uh, who, what's the, is that a Yogi Berra quote, uh, nobody comes here anymore, it's too crowded? Uh, but there, uh, there, the, the impact of not having sufficient housing to support the economic base of the region is a very real factor in the livelihood of everybody who lives here and their children who'd like to live here.
Yes, and I understand because Carver's currently, and almost all of the Cape in regards to that is, is currently under the gun for it.
Yeah, we're all, we're all 62 and plus, that's our, that's our median age.
And next year, when the state comes back and says, we've expanded the MBT community requirements, or five years from now, or 10 years from now, and they bring it back, what they originally proposed was, was, would have crushed this town. It's because they put an importance on the agricultural needs, especially close to Boston. We're, what, one of the largest agricultural communities closest to Boston, and we're being torn apart. We can't afford it. What, we, how short were we on our budget this year? Every year? Uh, we're short on police officers, you can't tell me, we probably couldn't use a few more fire departments, uh, more programs in school, it's, we're always under strain in regards to this. I'm, this is meant to push development to areas where it's supposed to be. Town centers, transfer development rights, uh, conservation subdivisions, townhouse subdivisions. All right, um, is there anything further? The chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing for the second article to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw, section 2320, table of dimensional requirements, to increase lot size from 60,000 square feet to two acres and increase frontage from 150 feet to 200 feet, in order to reduce overall development and protect resources as recommended in the 2001 Carver Master Plan or take any action relative there to. But before I take that motion, no, I, I will take that motion, uh, a favorable vote.
Sir, or is it-
I know, we're closing-
Closing the hearing?
Closing the hearing, yes.
Okay, motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing made by Mr. Gasky.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Williams. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
I have a question, you know-
Please.
Is this is already on the warrant, correct?
It is, and-
So we don't have to vote to put it on and then vote to recommend?
No, this is our recommendations for the warrant, for the warrant article, so-
Selectmen do two votes, but we're not, it's already on there. They vote to put it on, then whether they recommend, but if this is already on-
The select board doesn't make recommendations on zoning.
Okay, so we're one vote.
Um, so if I may, what's the process you guys vote to?
We just make a recommendation at town meeting, we don't, we don't pass the laws, a town meeting will pass laws, we're just going to make our recommendation to how we feel the town should vote in regards to it.
I have a question, how did that go previously, Sarah, when they tried to do this?
They never did, they never get around to it, but-
Was this on a, no, it wasn't before, on, on a ballot or anything? Oh, okay, just curious. Thank you.
Although, yeah, it probably should have been back in, when it was under the original, um, master plan, but I, they didn't get around to it or whatever the case may be, there's, there's a lot of stuff that was left undone on that that I didn't revisit.
If I may, um, it's not that we didn't get around to it, it's that we realized it was a really bad idea, that's why it didn't make it to a ballot.
Not specific to this, there's a whole list-
To the, to the, the lot size?
Point of order, please.
Public hearing's closed.
We did, yeah, right.
I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I wanted to correct that. Thank you.
Right, now, there, there was a list in the original master plan of, of things to be done, and a lot of it didn't get done. Uh, we've been working on the, the new master plan to get this list of the new master plan done. And this isn't specifically mentioned in the new master plan, but it's also specifically not mentioned that it was a bad idea or taken out of it. All right, any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to recommend the second article as read to town meeting. A yea vote is a recommendation, a nay vote is a not recommendation. Mr. Gasky.
It's a tough question.
Lucky you got the first name in the alphabet.
Yeah, I don't know how I would vote at town meeting. But I will recommend it for consideration.
Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says nay.
Ellen Sedillo says nay.
Don Williams says nay.
And Mr. Shea says aye. So it's a three-two. Our next order of business is-
So if I can just put a bow on that, so this goes to town meeting, it's on the warrant with a recommendation, uh, by the planning board to not take favorable action.
No, three to two nay, to yes, that's the recommendation.
The, the recommendation is, it, it, there's not a positive recommendation on this.
Right, and it should be listed as a, a three nays and, and two yays.
So, so the recommendation to approve at town meeting will be two-three, which is a negative recommendation.
Yes.
So, so, and it requires a two-thirds vote to change the zoning. If you were changing the zoning to make it more, uh, 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 favorable to housing, it would be a 50% vote, because it's 50% plus one if you're zoning towards more housing. Uh, and in the event that it doesn't pass at town meeting, uh, then it can't come back for two years unless the planning board makes a favorable recommendation next year. So that's where we're at right now.
No, I, it, as far as I'm concerned, if it's not passed at town meeting, it shouldn't come back for two years for any article.
All right, so I guess, so everybody's clear.
We're just, it, leaving it up to the people to decide because that's two runs to town. All right, uh, town planner notes?
None. I'm just closing things up over here.
No, no, that's okay.
So I do have a couple of things for, uh, for signatures. Uh, we have an A and R plan, uh, we, uh, we didn't get the mile R back, so we've got some copies, this is from the plan the board endorsed last week, or two weeks ago for 12 South Main. Uh, I've got an extension letter for you to sign for Rocky, uh, Maple Extension, and then the performance bond for, uh, uh, plus power. So we did work with town council, we did get to, uh, the point where we have a bond in place that they've submitted to us for $2 million, and the question was, there's a place for the town to sign. So I asked town council, who should sign that? They said the chairman of the planning board. So we're all set with that, they've got their electrical permit and they're doing whatever they're doing down there. So those are the three things I've got for you guys to do before we head out the door.
Excellent. Uh, we've changed town meeting?
Uh, town meeting is June 9th?
Roughly three months out.
Yeah, give me just a second.
June 4th.
6:30.
Uh, town elections are remaining the same day, which is?
April 27th?
Do we, do we get an answer on when that, Mr. Bott?
Uh, I don't know when the election is, I don't-
No, I, I, I thought you were at the page before that might, might tell us.
Yeah, I don't do elections, I do town meetings, I don't do-
Right, right.
April 27th.
April 27th?
27th.
Saturday, April 27th, excellent. No, I'm, it's actually, should be on the front page there, but it's not. Uh, all right, uh, further discussion amongst members? Seeing none?
Um, hold on real quick.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, flag football season is about ready to kick off, uh, spring sports, so, uh, the 23rd is when we have, uh, is when the flag football combine is, uh, over at the, uh, over at the high school. So, um, if you haven't signed up and you're thinking about signing up, sign up.
All right.
Get it done.
All right, uh, the chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2024. Motion made by Mr. Gasky, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Williams. Any concerns or comments? Edits, seeing none? Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Uh, the chair will accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 23rd, 2024.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sedillo.
I'll second again.
Seconded by Mr. Williams.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. Uh, the chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
I will make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sedillo.
I'll second again.
Seconded by Mr. Williams. Mr. Gasky?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, have a great evening, thank you, Area 58.